Alright, today is...
We can't hear you, Eric.
Okay, my mic's on.
Alright.
Today is Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, and it's 7:01 P.M. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Arundel Planning Board in the Arundel Municipal Building Meeting Room. I'll start with a roll call.
Party A.
Walgreen.
Bob McGinn.
Susan Senin.
Dave Lawrie.
I'm Rich Kenon with Chair. We have approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes of August 17th. We have space for public comment. We have a public hearing on the condition of use permit for the Holy Donut, map 36 lot 17. And then we have pending applications for the conditional use permit for the Holy Donut. We have, we have a couple of items of business. We have a motion to send the land use ordinance to a public hearing on September 21st. There is no planners report, but I do have a couple of items for discussion that we may want to look at going forward in terms of the land use ordinance. And the motion to approve.
I got it.
And I have, I have to ask the Secretary if he will make notes. I don't want Ian yelling at me. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Are there any changes? Here we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes, August 17th, 2021. Make a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second? But no. Motion been made and seconded. Motion by Paul, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Here is none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None. Do we have to make anything about sidewalk permits? Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't, I have all the motions in.
I'm just asking, I'm not, it's called.
The, the motion to, the motion to approve the minutes of August 17th passed unanimously. Public comment, since there's nobody here from the public, I'm gonna skim right over that item. And we'll go directly to the public hearing. Start the public hearing at 7:04. This is a conditional use permit, Holy Donut map 36 lot 17. Application for change of use to the existing structure on, on the site to create a drive-through, storage, office, and production space. The Holy Donut Incorporated is the applicant Seesaw Holding Company LLC as the landowner. Sam Lavelle, P.P. of Acorn Engineering, is the authorized agent for the application, for the applicant. And I would have to say that since there's nobody here from the public that wants to ask you any questions about it, we will close the public hearing at 7:05. And we will go straight to the pending application. Conditional use permit, the Holy Donut map 36 lot 17. Does the board have any questions for the applicant? You know, the only concern I really have about that is how are you gonna persuade, persuade SISCO not to try to drive an 18-wheeler on there and run over all of the landscape?
Oh, no, this, I don't, we, that was wrong.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You can use, you, I don't, yeah, use this one here in the front. They're both on, I've turned them both.
I am. So, do you have a feeling that there's another turn of use?
With, with an 18-wheeler?
Right.
With the 18-wheeler?
That's right.
Okay. I know the issue has come up and wanted to be sure about maybe calibration answers my question.
Yeah, and mix schedule, not turn it out, so, so really kind of opposite. That's definitely new for them, that's what the issue is for.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Fireway with seafood center, either not the last owner, but owner before. SISCO did come in and they weren't able to maneuver.
Well, yeah, my big concern was if there's going to be some landscape that sticks out a little bit further than where it was before. I just needed to make sure that everything was gonna, gonna work out. As you can, as you see on the plan, Marty, there's a little green section next to the building that used to be the church. And I was just afraid that they would not be able to make that turn without taking that. But if you've got to figure it out.
The first time they try coming south.
Yeah.
They'll recognize it coming from the other.
Hopefully.
No, I think that maneuver coming from the north would be much easier, very easy.
Okay, so.
Right, if it's off hours, I mean, there's nothing saying.
Right. Exactly. You could loop right around from then, yeah.
And to be honest, whether like we're the kind of thing that is like, right? Or you're part of the other stores, given.
Reason we chose them for five minutes, they're very good to work with, just, um, so we, you know, noted that.
Yep.
That they can be coming. To the chair.
Yes, yeah, Marty.
Before it was an ice cream shop, there was, there was a building there already. And they were able to maneuver around. Because it was a redemption center at one time, and before that, it was first designed, um, using with this dump trucks and everything else with this trailer.
Are you ever going to move around that with this building here?
No, my, 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 the ice cream shop is that, there was, that was another garage at one time or another, and there was still enough room to maneuver around before.
No, my, my whole concern was, was not moving around the property, we should get, getting on the property. Okay, are there any other concerns for the applicant? Hearing none.
Yeah, one says we're the donors.
We can ask them after, off camera.
Hopefully before the.
Okay. Count of Arundel, Arundel Planning Board, findings of fact and approval, conditional use permit, September 7th, 2021. Seesaw Holdings Company LLC, 1181 Portland Road. Whereas on July 13th, 2021, Acorn Engineering, on behalf of Seesaw Holding Company LLC, submitted an application for the property at 1181 Portland Road to be approved for the use of Holy Donut. The project is located at 1181 Portland Road, map 36 lot 17, within both the downtown Business District 1, DB1, and 2, DB2. Most recently, the site consisted of an ice cream parlor, a seafood restaurant, and a church. Under a long-term lease, Holy Donut would occupy three of the four existing buildings for office production and a drive-through walk-up retail. The fourth building, which is in poor condition and used primarily for storage, would be demolished. It's proposed to utilize the existing infrastructure onsite to accommodate Holy Donut's occupation of the site. Given that demand on utilities is anticipated to be reduced compared to the previous uses, each building will be internally renovated as necessary to support the various aspects of the business operation. Whereas on August 3rd, 2021, the Arundel Planning Board did hear the initial presentation made on the application by Acorn Engineering. Whereas on August 3rd, 2021, the planning board did set a date for the site watch on August 16th, 2021, had a public hearing for August 17th, 2021, but did not find the application complete due to the need for a main DOT driveway and its permit. Whereas the planning board signed the application completed on August 17th, 2021, and submitted a main DOT driveway change of use application. Whereas the planning board held a hearing on August 17th, 2021 to review the proposed development, and no one spoke for or against the project. And whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Findings of fact number one, the owners of the property, Seesaw Holding Company LLC, DBA, Holy Donut. Number two, the property is located at 1181 Portland Road, tax map 36 lot 17. The property is 3.05 acres. Number four, the property currently contains four separate structures serving as a restaurant, church, storage building, and an ice cream shop. Number five, the applicant proposes to utilize the ice cream shop as a drive-through retail donut sales, demolish the rear building, and utilize the small front building as office space and storage, and the former restaurant as a production facility for donuts. Enformance with additional use criteria. After due reviewing consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in accordance with the criteria of 929 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. 9291, that the property is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring, neighboring properties. The structures on the property will be utilized in the same manner as the previous buildings have been used. A drive-through, retail, office, and a previous restaurant to be utilized for food production. You need to vote on one of these. Before we do that, something you have to ask.
So you, you voted in two sections, you said there's four buildings, one has already been demolished.
I know.
So that's not.
I don't think that creates a problem. There were four buildings originally. And, and you own the property, they just took it down a little sooner than they should have.
I'm just saying it's on, on your thing, it says lowly striked, and it's been, the second part of you guys to the fourth, the fourth building.
When was it, when was it demolished?
Uh, July.
Yeah, by the time it was signed up before.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
As part of your, as part of your, uh, previous owners, it's 68. So, maybe steps on this process.
I would say from your, since this is your application came in, or we reviewed it, complete after the date it was demolished, I would, I would just probably strike that from the, the.
Because we saw it on the sidewalk, it's already gone. We saw it, the thing was already gone. I would strike those, those things.
You know, I already make reference to only three buildings on site.
Previous one had been demolished.
So we'll have to.
But you see what I'm saying? Because we, we saw it as a sidewalk without it there. And we saw it as a thing without there. Let's say that it's going to be there and it's there.
Okay.
The intent is still.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm not taking anything for a change. And I'm just saying as it's written, we didn't see a building. So we're like, um, what do we talk about? There was something that says.
Did your plan reference the fourth building to be demolished?
Again, I don't think it's gonna negate it because I just wanted to be clear on what we did to the sidewalk, the couch, for a fourth, and our enough, so let's know building, uh, need, it was already gone.
So, I think we should.
Strike it from one, three, four. You can take one, four, building had been there, that has been demolished on in July, or something like that.
Yeah.
No, we will have to leave it up to people.
Right.
Good thing to take, just the fact that it's still can be present in what you're saying, but that we just saw it gone already and demolished, too.
Does that even show up in, in these plans?
No.
No, they're gonna be gone, they wanted it gone.
Well, yeah, she's, she tends to.
Yeah, you don't have a plan.
This is kind of a simplified color, but it should, should be in those four places.
So you, yeah, yeah. The, the property is sort of a gadget, but, but really, it's, um. Yeah, I'll, yeah.
Are you fine?
Yeah, coordinating with Jamie about something.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, because it is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the building on these planes at all.
No, 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 I'm seeing that. Perhaps.
Yeah. So.
It's just like a single, I just want to make sure that it's true, because you have to, you're actually, you're not, we, I don't want it to be stated before we create science, that's what it is. We're gonna agree to it, however, more than likely along the way. I'm just saying I don't want that to be stated that we're saying about.
Right, so I, I will have findings of fact number six. That indicates that the existing storage facility has already been demolished. Okay, back to 9291. That the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. The structures on the property will be utilized in the same manner as the previous buildings have been used to drive through retail, office, and a previous restaurant to be utilized for food production.
Food, food.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve 9291. Any questions and discussion?
There was none. I think instead of same as, if you would, if the word similar, instead of put, the drive-through is.
It's a retail space that.
Right. Similar or comparable, something along those lines. Right.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 9292, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and anticipated future developments of the neighborhood. In that the 2016 comprehensive plan encourages the Route 1 corridor to be utilized for commercial development. The current zoning on the property is split between DB1 and DB2. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9293, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into this site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed use is proposing to make modifications on the site and point of access that will provide better safety controls for traffic circulation that currently exists. Make a motion to accept. 9293. Second. Motion's been made and seconded for 9293. Any discussion?
I have a quick question, um, in regard to the Arundel sidewalks, are there gonna be, um, crosslots painted from your, incoming from one end to another, just for stopping?
Yes, I believe that is.
Up there, I'm talking about from your plant to your offices or anything like that, is there gonna be any kind of modification that people should know and stop, let people go by?
Um, you had to, you had to.
I'm just curious, for safety, your, your thing of, for safety, there's some people that touch cross, across, uh.
Currently, uh, similar situations in our world.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're, say, please, you're, no.
Correct.
They're, they're not. So, we don't have that there.
Okay. Okay.
Other questions? A motion been?
Yes.
9294. Hearing, hearing no other questions or comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 9294, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal service to, of sewage disposal available to service the use. The proposed use already has adequate water supply and septic systems that has adequate capacity for the proposed uses. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Marty.
Want to make a note that there's fires, fire items, they're within a thousand feet.
Okay.
Because it's down in the corner of River Road and, uh.
Yeah.
Just, so have we been before.
It's almost on the property. Pretty close to the corner of the property.
Yeah, that's down on the other end near the lights.
That be under this item, or is it something for fire suppression?
No, what we have is already. It's not one of the conditional uses.
Absolutely. I meant then to say there's a hybrid nearby that will provide adequate fire protection.
I was just trying to point out a thousand feet, that's all.
Right. I mean. Well, putting the hybrid within a thousand feet, located within a thousand feet, this thing hybrid is located within a thousand feet of the use. Yeah, that will provide adequate fire protection.
The reason I'm saying that is because if we ever have questions about something not being within a thousand feet, we can note it in the deck.
Any other, any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of 9294?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9295, that there will be no noise, stops, odor, vibrations, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect the neighboring properties. In that the use is proposed onsite at consistent with previous uses, and are of an office and a media location.
All proposed?
Yeah. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
It's a small, large, and seafood.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 9296, that the physical characteristics.
We'll check it again.
9296, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetation cover, are suitable for the proposed use. The existing structures on this site will be reutilized, not disturbing the physical characteristics of the site. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 9297, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No additional use nuisances will be generated by the proposed use.
Aye.
It is, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 9298, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance and the Street Design and Construction Ordinance in the design of the proposed activities.
Aye.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Therefore, a clear resolve that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the amended conditional use application. I have no idea why, I've got special design statements. I know, no, this is.
Yeah, it's a type of case situation. That's all.
Okay, so. Yeah. No, no. So, based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the conditional use application to Seesaw Holy Companies LLC to establish. Yep, to be approved for the use of Holy Donut, the project is located at 1181 Portland Road, tax, map 36 lot 17, within the downtown Business District, DB1 and DB2. Any amendments to the site plan or to this approval shall be subject to the planning board or staff review, committee approvals. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board, the 7th day of September, 2021.
Proven to approve?
Aye.
Yep, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. I will get these retyped up. I haven't had any long discussion. Okay, so we, we, we will get these taken care of. We can sign the plans tonight. So that you can get started, but we'll get the findings of fact out to you as quickly as possible.
Because we can still sign those electronic and other things and stuff.
Yeah, we just have, we just have.
You're proof, you're gonna sign the actual plan, makes it, you know, but we, the other part of this.
And why won't we figure out what all the signatures have?
Very exciting, just.
We're gonna ask you all to get up and lock down this way to sign it, so we don't end up.
Pass it down.
All over the place. There were, I think it's just the one thing, but there are two separate documents that you signed. So that you have one, you'd be, would you?
Shut on, you got these building here all year? So, uh, we need to get it, get that, okay, running, did it, or else?
Yes.
We have to get it ready.
Your air Venmo says that. Have you seen the road, have you done yet? Have you seen the road, have you done? If I can, if I can. So, I'm just saying. Some, some.
Thank you, guys.
Very much.
Good luck. So, are we gonna bring your donuts?
I don't know.
You wanna, you wanna bring a smile on your face? What we can do is, we can, well, let's know when it's time to, when it's like, what's the.
And what if I deserve? And what if I have food for dessert? Say, what if you put more dessert? Come on, you look like. Thank you, guys.
Oh, broker's left here.
No, you were gonna send me the refrigeration.
Oh, you were gonna come see me.
Alright, well, please, uh, I'll pick that up.
You're crossing here, John. You're, you're, yeah, I'm crossing, but also, checkwood seafood center, that's the same guy. Not that seafood center, lobster company. It's the same guy who lives up the street.
Okay.
I mean, and Mike don't have this. Some people, we don't have this. Celebrate or refrigeration?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm always. Somebody you have for refrigeration.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, that's great.
Moving right along. Other business. Need a motion to send land use ordinance section 8645 for public hearing on September 21st.
I'll link that motion.
Okay. Motion made and seconded of all the public hearing on land use ordinance 8645. Any discussion? Hold the public hearing on Land use ordinance eight six four five, any discussion?
Yeah, you wanna identify exercise the number, what it is.
I'm sorry, did you say that again?
It's called criteria for granting special.
All right.
This, this was the, the part that, it's at town meeting, that there was some discussion on one point. So we're sending it back, because we now know what the answer to that question is.
I've been just thinking, so that if somebody raised it, and if it comes to the public hearing, they know what it is all about.
Well, if, yeah, it should be posted with, with, with the, the changes that were made.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay, all those in favor?
Okay.
Aye, any opposed? It is unanimous. There is no town. I looked at this, Lee Jay and I were talking about a couple of things that more want to look like. I don't think twenty-five feet on a buffer or subdivisions from the main road that they're, they're coming along is appropriate. I think it needs to be significantly higher than that, because you, even fifty feet from a buffer point of view, you can see quite clearly. And if our intent is to create the what the com, what I'm referring to is the culture of, or the character of Arundel. In order to maintain that, we have to have a large property. And I would, I would like, my, my first thought was, was like a hundred feet, which may be a little extreme, but I, I think it's something that we need to, to think about and discuss at some point in the future. So that we can avoid the problems that we had in, in a couple of other subdivisions. And it's only applied to the subdivision. That was number one. Number two is affordable housing. This is great concept of affordable housing. I have no idea what it is. I have no idea how to define it, but I guess, um, housing in urban development has, has defined it, and Maine has done some research on it, Maine has come up with some others. It indicated in terms of Arundel, we are the fifth out of the top ten, uh, communities in Maine that do not have affordable housing, we ranked up the top. I don't know if that's good or bad, I don't have any thoughts on it. But the, the idea came up that if we're, we have affordable house, and we're supposed to, that maybe we should designate, when a developer comes in to put in the subdivision, a particular percentage or a particular number of, of units that they have to sell in the affordable housing category. And I said, they're taking their bed no, which is exactly what I do. I wanted to bring it up. If, if we're going to be serious about doing something for affordable housing from here, we have to have some kind of standard, some, some criteria that we can work on.
Senator.
I have, I've already said, Marty, thank you. Um, so, affordable housing can be, um, houses, can be condos, can be apartments, and those things can be of discussion. But having a, a subdivision, have housing percentages of the subdivision, be considered affordable housing? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. That, because that's, this is an idea that, that DJ had, and he kicked it around with me. And I, part of me thinks it's a good idea, but part of me thinks it's a terrible idea. The part of me that thinks it's a terrible idea is that I just thought some, somebody who has to build a house, it's only worth a ton of dollars. I think, I think we should be able to build a house in size, it must, whatever money you get. But we have to start a discussion of something, something affordable housing. So it's, it's something for everybody to think about.
So you, question, Marty, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, Marty.
Okay, you said we're number five out of, out of the ten. Well, my question is, out of that numbers, what kind of infrastructure do they have of water and sewer? Because affordable housing along that lines is your water and sewer, because that's one of the biggest, big expenses along the way. And what, like I said, the numbers that you, out of the ten, how many of those ten do you know or think of, or checking into, that actually has water and sewer?
Two. There might be two of them on the list.
Nah, I mean, I'm just using that as a.
Oh, and it's understandable, really, I mean, they, they take averaging dollars and multiply it by some factor. And I think that's what a person, somebody making sixty thousand dollars a year should be able afford to build a thousand dollar house. That's the level at which they say that's affordable. I have no idea how, I don't, I have no idea how we think that's affordable housing. This, this, that's the kind of discussion that is going around right now, on various statistics and numbers that are available. I just want us to start thinking about it, and at some point, we're gonna have to make a decision about what is or is not important, do we even want it?
Question, are we, is there a statement, Dave, that we?
Yes.
That we have an ordinance that addresses affordable housing?
Yep.
Or that criteria?
No.
In there?
That's, that's part of the.
Part of it.
There's, there's not a lot of criteria for the agenda. Lee Jay has some copy.
Has Lee Jay pulled up ordinances of, of comparable towns, close and or comparable?
Not that I know of.
I mean, does he have one, let's take somebody in Florida.
They are, they are on the list.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying, is to see a model therefore of what we're discussing, before we just make that something out there.
Yeah, there, there was, there's, there's been a study though.
No, no, I meant as an ordinance example.
Oh, I, I don't know if you guys have heard of any ordinances.
We, we ask them. Oh, yeah.
Again, this is just, we need to start thinking about these things. Unfortunately, like everything else in the planning board, well, it's, as soon as we get something done, we find that we lost it, we'll have something else.
So is there a push from the state?
There is an option.
They're, okay. Is he concerned that there will be one?
I don't know. He, I mean, he mentioned a study, I asked him about it.
Be surprised if something like that comes out, because so many people are feeling.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially from a lot of coastal, um, areas.
Yeah, I, I'd much rather be proactive.
That's why now it's going to become some of the large, whatever you can see, if you can see it, if you start to track our own resources for that, it's gonna come.
If, if we can find communities that do not have water, do not have sewer.
Most of Maine, upstate, is not having.
I don't think absolutely that's a problem.
But they might have an ordinance, that's what I'm saying, if you could look it up.
Yes.
There might be already some in systems.
There might be.
Even in nature, but just to see what.
I mean, we can.
Even if there are communities around that do have access to water and sewer that aren't necessarily fully filled out with water and sewer. They've got large pockets of, of their town that don't have access to water and sewer.
Senator.
Yeah, Marty.
On that numbers, how, I mean, we're still considered coastal, okay? And of those ten, how many are coastal towns? Because.
Those, those, those ten are in York County.
Those ten are in?
Those, those ten are in York County.
Okay. So we were just checking York County for affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay. But I mean, are any of those ten, say, near the coast? I mean, are they farther inland? Maybe you might say, I'm gonna give you an example, like Hornish, we, we are, we are probably the closest back to the coast. Yeah, so I mean, that, that is also a, uh, a negative to us, but also too probably at the same time. And also too is determined by access and everything else. I'm, I'm using these as neg, you know, negatives meaning because of the, uh, you know, the problem of you live away, housing is cheaper. Like, for example, Hornish, in comparison to, you know, accessibility, accessibility.
The, the state regulations and the federal regulations on affordable housing don't care if, if we.
Where you live.
They don't, right, they don't care where you live, because they're looking at what's the median income in that town. And in that town, you either have affordable housing or you don't, and you fit some way into the category. We fit in a very bad spot in that town, really. You can, you can say, out of all of the towns in York County, we are, there are, how many towns there are? There are four of them that are above us in terms of unaffordable housing.
Problem is, do you have any margin?
We also don't, we also don't have condos and apartment buildings and things that you can, uh, duplexes, a lot of duplexes. I mean, you compare it, like Apple Town. That's what I'm saying, that would be something us both find to be fixed, those things, and have that be like more affordable housing. That to go to development, say, you need to build a percentage of your house for the lower cost.
Oh, that's true.
Do you know what I mean? That's, that's more an issue, or to have one of our, like, the fifty-five plus, um, housing developments we have that are more of the, uh, pre-made homes, things like that, because those we assess that regard, which builds to say it, with developer saying, this percentage of your house has to be this. I think we should be researching that more. That's why I was just curious.
I agree, I, the drop back that I see to that, it's upon the developer who wants to put up.
I was defining the area in which the water would support it, and sewers would support it, which would be.
Well, see, that's, that's what, what it's hard to respond to, you know, we would look at the quality of the land.
Right.
And see what you will hold. And I think if we, if we can, if we can look at it from that point of view, then we, we will be in good, good standing to say, if that matters, or we do have it.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
We're not gonna support someone to build. Uh, because you're just looking at it like this. He's got some very high-end houses. Yeah. You know, you're gonna go in and tell them that, hey, we're doing, you have to be smart, she bought a house over the.
I, I don't wanna change that. Value, the house, and that, so it's, it's a different wrestle. With some towns, you have to. This for, for life now, now. They're, they're like, this line, add something, they have, right, this, right, you know, more, uh, it is well, but it maybe could have built a, a location. Trade on it. There would be, there'd actually be ways to, to get in a, like, this line actually built a few small houses, tiny ones, don't it? To have, have a taxi, and the others, and that's one way, but that's at, at gracious, it's a, a battle. Or we, we increase taxes to put towards a pool funds to build it, I don't know if anybody wants that. There's, there has to be something, it's, it really, it, it sort of come down to maybe making wealthy family type of homes, or, or less constraint, strain. Right now, really, you don't see too many of that.
Well, this is, this is, this is kind of where I'm hoping we can get to discussion, oh, so that we can bring this up, what then? Healthy family would be a great.
Healthy family, things like that, like the, the, the unit setup, trying to kind of, they're probably either just trying to, those are low income classes. The condo units, huh? Working nine, any of that, they're.
I didn't, I didn't.
There are two flexes in there, they're, the garage and then the house, I think eighty percent of those are low income classes. But I mean, you would know, they're lovely.
If it's, if it's low income, it can be, it would come off like this.
Well, it's, it's, it's section A qualified, so, you know, it's not even like that, so there's a lot of, they're lovely condos, but they're, the percentage of them are that, are low income in section A, and, you know what I mean? So, that's what I'm saying, we can get that situation, because they would like, you can get that good income out of that for someone who did all of her, her, her.
It's, it's something that, yeah, Marty.
I think, if you remember, Mark, that we do have some low income housing already here in town. The reason I'm saying that is, is you were speaking of this side, but this side also made the development of golf courses, development there. And those are low income, I mean rentals and everything else.
Rentals, yeah.
Johnny, I'm just using that as a, as saying that we do have something instead of nothing.
And we, you know, from a, from a local point of view, we should probably try to find someone to get rental property in town, not just because of the captains, it may or may not qualify with low income. Most of these people that fit into the thirty-five hundred group, don't wanna buy houses anymore.
No, but also too, depends on your location, I mean, if you're on Proctor Road, where you got the power lines, the land is cheaper, but not everybody wants to live near the power lines. I mean, uh.
I, I, I agree, and I understand, you know, it, it may be one of the things that we may want to say to the board of select, we need to have some kind of a study to find out what we really have, that is, that fits into the category of, of affordable housing. I think, I don't know if it would qualify, but we have two mobile home parks over on Campground Road.
Right, Crossroads.
Yeah, well, there's two on Crossroads, and then there's.
One eleven was a heat month, it's two of them.
Shady Oaks.
Yeah, Shady Oaks.
But then you got one on one eleven. Charter Road.
But yeah, you know, we may, we may want to see, see if there's any money available, do a study, and, and what, what kind of housing we actually have.
Yes.
We're gonna get asked about it next week, we're gonna be kind of off, if we're anything, and I'm behind you.
Okay, let's move on to the next question.
Because I thought we had, I thought when we talked to Lee Jay, so much concern in our, but our, our agenda would be so full, I mean, now this doesn't.
We're, we're not, yeah, right now it's, it's slow, we've got a couple of things that have come before us. We're going to have a major subdivision. We will give a body one first, I won't either. Take a lot of conscious, once we stand out, we can put in more than a hundred people. My thought is, if they're gonna do that, they need to find us, maybe decide to meet.
So they don't have, they don't have any priority of a, of a, of a.
But it's, it's not a public, they're gonna, they're one company, they're not a special. They're, they're a couple of other developers, uh, in the works, either sidewalk or. Just extended. And I'm not, I don't think there's anything else that's, and which, which does work in our favor, if it's, if stuff, and again, if there is something unique ordinance, that you guys might like, and we'll get see if we can, see if it needs to be fixed, and with Bob Coates, it's getting very much.
I see they're trying to find new members of the charter commission.
Yes, the, the board of selectmen is reconstituting the charter commission to review everything. They have some changes that they want. I have some changes to the charter I might get. We'll see what happens. And you know, if, if you got us of interest, I'll see you later. Yeah, I'm, I'm retiring at the top.
I've been, just been there.
No, I think that was everything that, you know, I just wanted, we've got a bunch of stuff that we can, we can start looking at and you've got stuff that you wanna look at. Let Lijie know, let me know and we'll just, we'll proceed forward and play it out for yourself and see.
Whatever.
And you know, honestly, if, if, if you guys all disagree with my, my suggestion.
Whatever came of the sewer study?
Other selectmen have done nothing with the sewer study. They, they got sidetracked with the town hall.
Well, then they don't wanna do a study on affordable housing if they have nothing to do with that.
Yeah, you know, that's a valid, like Marty did. We're gonna ask him anyway.
So will you look into those to like, on a design like that?
Yes.
Is the other Susan tonight in Corningstone?
Susan.
Was an endpoint.
She had, she had some kind of, she, she told me she had some kind of a personal, personal reason. And I was like, okay.
I'm just saying with, with all the numbers that come in about everything else.
Well, she called me this afternoon and she said she had some, some personal reason that came up. She wasn't gonna be able to make a point of it.
Oh, just in part.
Okay, somebody make a motion.
Yay.
Motion to adjourn, guys.
What time?
It is seven fifty-three.
Early, thank you.
We are done.